Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Drusilla Tigner. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm the Executive Director of Texas for All and Texas for All Education Fund. Together, we make up a statewide coalition of 21 progressive organizations that believe that Texas should work for all of us, no matter who we are or where we live. We're gathered here today with some of our members, partners, and elected champions to sound the alarm on the cruel session, special session, that Governor Abbott has just called. The reality is that Governor Abbott is letting President Trump take over Texas. Instead of focusing on the devastating natural disaster that just happened in our state or preparing for the next one that we know that will inevitably happen, he is focusing on bringing Trump-style politics into Texas and pushing an extreme national agenda in our state. But we aren't going to let that happen without a fight. The folks that are here today, we represent different issue areas, we represent different constituencies, we represent different organizations, but we have one thing in common, and that is that we are not going to let Governor Abbott, President Trump, or anyone else steal our rights from us. We want to make one thing very clear, and that is Texans deserve leaders who will put us first and who will not bend the knee to Donald Trump or anyone else at the national level. So with that, I want to pass it on to somebody who is no, who has lots of experience at fighting back at the national level and against Donald Trump specifically, and that is Congressman Greg Gassar.
Thank you, Drew. Good morning. I'm Greg Gassar. I'm proud to represent the heart of Texas in the United States Congress. I'm Chairman of the Progressive Caucus in the U.S. House. I'm so grateful to be surrounded by these great leaders here from Texas, from our elected representatives here in the House to community leaders that care for everyday Texans so very much. We're here today because Donald Trump just signed into law the biggest transfer of wealth from working-class Texans to the ultra-rich in living history. Donald Trump just signed into law a bill to kick millions of Americans off of their health care, and Trump has no plan for winning the midterm elections. Instead, he has a plan for rigging those midterm elections. Trump's plan is to demand that Greg Abbott and Texas Republicans bend the knee and give him total control over the maps here in Texas that are supposed to protect voters' rights. He wants Texans to give up their power to elect their own representatives so that Trump himself can avoid any accountability in the upcoming elections. Whether you're conservative, liberal, or right up the middle, you should have the opportunity to pick your politicians, not the other way around. What Trump is trying to do here with our already illegally and extremely racially gerrymandered maps in Texas is to put racial gerrymandering on steroids, disenfranchising millions of working-class Texans and communities of color, and trying to put a nail in the coffin of the Voting Rights Act. Trump has already taken us back to pre-1965 when it comes to Medicaid. Now he wants us to go pre-1965 as it relates to voting rights. So the choice now is whether Greg Abbott and Texas Republicans will act like elected representatives and defend the law, defend their own districts, defend their own constituents, or whether they will just be Daddy Donald Trump's water boys. The plan that is being put forward by Trump would undermine the freedom and the democracy that Texans deserve no matter what, and it is all the more offensive because there are still people missing in the Hill Country, because we are still mourning over 100 people dead. This special session should be focused on rebuilding, not on redistricting. If Republicans move forward with this reckless plan, Democrats in the legislature will need to do everything they can to stand up for people's voting rights and to stand up for people all over this country. We have a multi-step plan. We will need to buy time, and that means keeping everything on the table, doing whatever it takes, having on the table filibusters, dragging out hearings, quorum breaks, the kinds of tactics that will make sure that we have the time to highlight these issues in front of everyday Americans. Second, we need to have a real fight, both here in Texas and all across the country. We know members of Congress, governors in every state across the country are watching what is happening here in Texas, because if they kill the Voting Rights Act in Texas, this endangers the voting rights of people all over America. And third, if Greg Abbott lets Trump take over Texas, we cannot let him do it without a cost. And so we are recruiting candidates, candidates of conscience, all over Texas, making sure they are well-funded, so that if any of these Republicans decide to stand up for Donald Trump instead of their own constituents and they're newly vulnerable in these vulnerable districts, they should expect a well-funded challenge in every single corner of the state of Texas. We are going to fight this every step of the way because generations of our rights are on the line here. Y para los que están aquí reportando en español, soy Gregorio Gassar, representando el centro de Texas, y quiero que nuestra comunidad sepa que estamos aquí luchando por sus derechos y luchando para proteger la gente de próximas inundaciones, que seguimos buscando gente todavía aquí en el centro de Texas. Y Abbott debe de defender nuestras comunidades, no quitarles sus derechos. Quieren cambiar estos mapas para que no puedan, saben que no pueden ganar las próximas elecciones, entonces quieren cambiar las reglas. Quieren cambiar las reglas de una manera de quitarle el derecho de elegir sus propios representantes, en particular a nuestras comunidades hispanas y nuestras comunidades afroamericanas, y vamos a luchar con todo lo que tenemos para defender los derechos de la gente aquí de Texas. Thank you all very much. And next, I'm calling up Denise Palacios.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Denise Palacios. I'm the Texas State Lead for Climate Cabinet. This month, we have seen some of the deadliest floods in Texas history. Over 130 lives were lost, and up until this weekend, 160 were still missing. I was in Leander over the weekend volunteering, and the disaster is so much more unimaginable than anything that could be covered in the press. My heart breaks for every community from Williamson to Kerr to Burnett to Kendall. But this isn't just happening in Texas. North Carolina, New Mexico, and New Jersey have recently experienced unprecedented 1,000-year floods, and these deaths are caused by the climate crisis and its long-past lawmakers' ability to act. The rising waters don't care about your party affiliation, your gender, your sexuality, or your income, and neither do the countless Texans working to rebuild our state after this devastation. But as our governor calls for a special session and legislators file bills, political gerrymandering, restricting gender expression, and further restricting access to abortion seem to be the only topics at hand. And these tragedies in central Texas should bring us together. They should move us forward to make our communities safer from real threats like fires, heat waves, and floods, and not imaginary culture wars. They should be investing in improved planning and infrastructure and alert systems, building codes, emissions monitoring. Lawmakers need to take action so that we can be better prepared when the next climate catastrophe inevitably occurs. And if we don't act now, the incidence and deadliness of these climate catastrophes will only increase. Climate change is no longer this abstract concept that we can just continue to ignore. It's very literally at our doorsteps. And the stakes could not be higher. Lawmakers should be providing and prioritizing desperately needed flood relief and implementing common sense measures like disaster warning systems. But instead, it seems like some politicians care more about partisan gerrymandering than addressing the urgent needs of families whose lives are being destroyed by the climate crisis rather than addressing the real harm they are wasting their time on these political attacks. Texas families deserve better, and I know that our lawmakers can be better. Thank you so much for your time.
Next up, we have Darcy Caballero, who is the Government Relations and Political Director at Planned Parenthood Texas Votes.
Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Darcy Caballero, and I'm the Government Relations and Political Director at Planned Parenthood Texas Votes, and my pronouns are she and ella. As we know, Texans are still missing after the devastating floods in central Texas. Families are still in mourning, communities are still rebuilding. And instead of delivering the relief and leadership that Texans need, Governor Abbott is once again weaponizing a crisis to push a cruel, dangerous, and horrible policies. And this time, it's an attack on our freedom, our representation, and our care. He's not just ignoring what Texans need in this moment. He's letting President Trump take over Texas. Abbott is using this special session to push Trump's extreme political agenda, targeting abortion or trans neighbors, and rigging congressional maps to cling to power. But these attacks aren't random. They're coordinated, and they're designed to distract, divide, and control. But let's be clear about what this next anti-abortion bill that they've yet to file really is. It's not just about banning abortion medication. It's a warning shot, a message to every single Texan that if you even try to get care, this abortion ban will follow you, and so will the people in power who want to punish you for it. And to the rest of the country, don't you dare try to help them. This isn't policymaking. This is punishment. It's part of a blueprint to force Texans to suffer in isolation. But Texans see through it, and we know our worth, and we've stopped this kind of bill before, and we're ready to do it again. Because while they're focused on control, we're focused on care. While they divide, we organize. And while they chase Trump's approval, we're building real power rooted in what Texans actually need: real health care, real recovery, and real freedom. This is a fight for all of us, and we're not backing down.
Next up, we have Emily French, who is the Policy Director for Common Cause Texas.
Morning, y'all. I'm Emily Evie French. Welcome to the first, possibly annual, Donald Trump gerrymandering special session. Look, in a democracy, you're supposed to win elections with popular ideas and strong follow-through. Instead, Trump has decided to cheat. Abbott brags that he challenges the federal government's attempts to erode our Texans' rights at every opportunity, but when Trump demanded a mid-decade assault on the voting rights of Texans, Abbott folded like a cheap lawn chair. During a normal redistricting cycle, legislators would travel around the state to hold hearings. They would spend months asking Texans to describe their communities so they could theoretically map those communities together. But this Trump gerrymander is cheap and rushed. They are planning to hold hearings, as of right now, in only three cities: Houston, Austin, and Arlington. That means that they're not going to the Rio Grande Valley. 1.4 million voters live there, and they are, this legislature is going to attempt to crack their voting power without a single request for their input. They're not going to San Antonio, which shares reps with near places like Austin in the Hill Country, but also all the way down to the RGV, all the way out to the outskirts of San Antonio, or out to the outskirts of El Paso. They're not going to Amarillo or Lubbock or Tyler. Evidently, Governor Abbott has time to listen to Trump, but he doesn't have time to listen to Texans. They can't even agree on an excuse for redrawing the maps. Abbott cited a letter from ChatGPT, I'm sorry, Abbott cited a letter from the Trump DOJ that said that our 2022 maps are too race-conscious. Under oath in federal court, Texas GOP legislators repeatedly insisted that those same maps were totally race-blind. They're doing verbal gymnastics to fit with the sorry state of redistricting in the federal courts, but just because the Trump DOJ says it's legal does not mean it's legal. Even if it were legal, that sure as hell doesn't mean it's fair, good, or right for Texans. Texans deserve fair maps. Texans deserve representatives who represent them. When there's a natural disaster, Texans call our reps for help. The people who live in the same neighborhood should be calling the same rep for help. Instead, Abbott and Trump are so afraid of their own voters that they can't even wait for the last natural disaster to be over before drawing a line right down the middle of your street. Texans deserve fair maps and a transparent process for drawing them. Anything short of that is a failure, and we're going to fight it.
Thank you so much, Emily. Up next, we have Emmett Schelling, Executive Director of Transgender Education Network of Texas.
Hi there. It's good to be with you all this morning. My name is Emmett Schelling. I'm the Executive Director for TENT, as Drew said. I'm here to talk to you about a couple of pretty simple things: distractions and scapegoating. When our state is still looking at the devastating outcome of flooding in mid-Texas, what are we doing? We're here to talk about who can use what potty. When it is cloaked in a guise of safety around explicitly women needing to feel safe without men in their bathrooms, this legislation puts me right in those bathrooms. So who is feeling safe? What kind of chaos will that continue to ensue? What kind of civil rights encroachment will we continue to be even closer? One of the things that I understand, that I understand, is when we start legislating around bathrooms, it never means it's a good thing for our people. When we look into the history of what legislation around bathrooms and who can and cannot use public accommodations comes to light, it is never in service of the people. When we understand, right now, we are at a time where we need to work together to try to find solutions that work for the millions of Texans that depend on this. Instead, we are watching chaos and division, cruelty and name-calling, scapegoating, disparaging, and vilifying. I am not a threat. I'm a dad. I'm kind of boring. I got two small dogs. You know, I wouldn't be here if this is where we weren't at. I don't want to be here. I know so many people do not want to be here, but instead, I'm forced to be here to beg for such a basic right, to be able to use public accommodations with the money that my tax dollars pay for. This is bananas, y'all. We need to demand accountability from our legislators, and we need to force them to actually work in service of the people of Texas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emmett. Next up, we have Representative Ron Reynolds of District 27.
Good morning. I'm Ron Reynolds. I'm the second Vice Chair of the House Democratic Caucus and Chair Emeritus of the Texas Legislative Black Caucus. Last week, some of you may know that we had the five-year anniversary of the death of Congressman John Lewis, who, as many of you know, coined the phrase "good trouble," good and necessary trouble. It was that spirit that Congressman John Lewis had that was 60 years ago, a couple months ago, I went to Selma for the anniversary of Bloody Sunday. This was the 60th anniversary of the march from Selma to Montgomery that later became known as Bloody Sunday, where many freedom fighters, including Congressman John Lewis, risked their lives because they were advocating to end Jim Crow voting legislation that prohibited people of color from voting, our most basic fundamental right. They had things like poll taxes. They had things like literacy tests that were implemented as barriers to disenfranchise African-Americans. And so they did that, and because of their struggle, they passed the Voting Rights Act of 1965 that opened the door for a great Texan by the name of Barbara Jordan, who became the first African-American Congresswoman from the South since Reconstruction in the 18th Congressional District. This unfortunate redistricting that is racially targeted with four districts that were identified from the Department of Justice to Governor Abbott, and that was the 18th Congressional District that I mentioned, Barbara Jordan Hill. After that, it was Congressman Mickey Leland. After that, it was Congressman Craig Washington. After that, it was Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, Congressman Sylvester Turner, and then he, of course, he unfortunately died in office. And Governor Abbott, he didn't call a special election. He waited, and so that seat is now vacant. Congressman Al Green, who we all know has been making good trouble, he's been speaking truth to power, calling out the MAGA extremist Trump and all the cronies that are doing everything to disenfranchise many communities of color. He identified Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, the 29th Congressional District, and finally, Congressman Mark B.C., the 33rd Congressional District. What do all those districts have in common? They are African-American and Hispanic districts in Texas. They want to take us back to those dark days in our country that we have overcome. And so my message is simple. It's a call to action, to be willing to be on the right side of history, to speak truth to power, and tell Governor Abbott that we will not bow to that MAGA extremist President Trump that is doing everything he can to take our communities back. We're going to fight. We're going to do everything we can to stand up against these radical extremists, authoritarians, that are doing nothing but try to roll back the clock. That is what they're doing. We've seen it with the rollout of the anti-diversity equity and inclusion. We've seen it with the critical race theory nonsense where they don't want us to teach about these things in our schools, banning books, assaults on our LGBTQ communities, our immigrant communities, our Muslims. So we've seen a awful, just eviscerating our Constitution. And so I'm here to stand with my colleagues in the House Democratic Caucus to say, hell no, not on our watch are we going to let you take us back, that we're going to fight, and we're going to do everything we can. And so I'm happy that we are joined forces with a multiracial democracy, and that's what it took. That's what we saw during those Freedom Rides. It wasn't just African-Americans. It wasn't just, it was Jewish people. It was Hispanic people. It was women. It was men. And that is my final words. It's a call to action for all good people of good conscience to join us and push him back against these MAGA extremists that are trying to take our country in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Representative. Finally, we have the Chair of the House Democratic Caucus, Jean Wu.
Thank you so much. My name is Jean Wu. I'm the House District 137, and I'm also the current House Democratic Caucus Leader, the minority leader, if you will. Democrats are here today because we had a consensus that this was the right thing to do and the right strategic move to make, because we want to hold Governor Abbott and the Republicans accountable. We want to hold them accountable for the things they have promised. While they are still digging up bodies from riverbeds, we're meeting to talk about flood relief, disaster preparedness, and a whole lot of other stuff. But Democrats are saying that this is just a ruse, that Governor Abbott is using this tragedy, using the deaths of hundreds of Texans as the doorway to get what he wants politically. And our fear, the fear of our caucus and our members and our communities, is that the legislation and the money that is actually needed to help Texans and to prevent future disasters and to save lives will be buried, will be buried by all of the political mess that they are pouring down. We will see what they do. We will see if they have hearings on flooding first. We will see if they bring that legislation to us first. We will see if they prioritize what Texans have actually demanded first, or will they prioritize their politics and their shenanigans and their games? Democrats are talking. We are discussing, and we are watching. We are watching what the leadership of this state does. We are watching to see if they are going to listen to the people when they demand action, or will they serve themselves? Democrats are going to keep all options open. We will take whatever measures are necessary to protect our communities and to protect the state, protect every person in this state, because if the leadership of this state does not care about the lives and the safety of us and our families, if we are the only people willing to stand up against that, then so be it. But we will stand here in defending Texas, defending Texans, and defending Texas families. We will go and talk and warn everyone who is willing to listen of the danger that is coming, not just a failure to take care of the nearly $50 billion of backlog disaster preparedness, of the myriad pile of legislation dealing with disaster readiness, climate change, and all the other things that have been ignored over the years, not just that, but that if Republicans and Donald Trump is allowed to cheat our democracy, is allowed to cheat us without any repercussion, without even people making a peep, without any kind of resistance, then there is no hope for us anywhere in this nation. Democrats are here to not only defend Texas, we are defending America as well.
And to close us out, we have Rick Levy, President of the Texas AFL-CIO.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Chair Wu. Speakers, my name is Rick Levy, and I'm the President of the Texas AFL-CIO. The AFL-CIO is a Federation of Unions representing over 250,000 working people in this state. We know something about fighting together for our rights. All of the issues that you've just heard about impact our members, and they impact Texas workers, and that's why we stand in solidarity with this very broad coalition, because it's going to take all of us to fight together to stop this Trump takeover. Why is this happening? We have just seen the largest transfer of wealth from working-class people to billionaires in the history of the entire world with the stroke of one man's pen. We've seen health care coverage taken from millions of people, and Texas already, as you know, is at the very bottom of insured people. We've seen the biggest single act of union busting in the history of this nation, when this president stripped collective bargaining rights from over a million workers with the stroke of his pen. That is what is at stake: accountability and the fight back to make sure that we undo those actions and it never happens again. Here's the thing: It's time for the governor to cut this BS and stop using this special session to push a national political agenda. We're not going to fall for it. Why is our governor weekly allowing President Trump to order him around while ignoring the real problems faced by Texans? Y'all, real leadership in times of crisis is bringing people together to solve these deep problems and disasters that we have all just devastatingly experienced, and yet the first thing out of the box is driving a wedge through people as broad as Texas for political gain, and that's shameful. We need leaders who put Texas first, not people who play political games. And so at this point, we're going to open it up for questions from folks from the media. Thank you all for being here, and we'll try and answer any questions that you have.
Hey, we've seen this several times over the last couple of decades. Redistricting, or voting rights bills called, the Democrats mobilize, sometimes they go away, sometimes they stay and fight. Each time, the ending is the same: they lose. What is going to be different, if anything, this time?
I've got something to say. If you're asking about the idea that Republicans continuously use our system, use our political system for their benefit, to their personal benefits, so that their friends take care of their donors and all this stuff, yes, they continuously do that. And Democrats have been here every step of the way, trying to stop them, trying to make sure that the people's voice... trying to make sure that the people's voice, the voices of working-class people around the state get heard. We will fight that fight just the same. Now, if you're saying that, you know, what of it? Why bother fighting? They're gonna win anyways. We are here to fight for Texans, whether we win or lose. No matter what happens, Democrats are here to fight for Texans, fight for Texas families, fight for working-class people across the state, no matter if they're Democrats or Republicans or nothing at all. We all deserve to have a voice, and a voice that represents our community and a voice that understands the community. And it's not just about redistricting. This is about everything around us, about whether or not what people want, what people demand, what the public has asked for again and again and again actually gets taken care of. And we are trying our best to hold them to account, to hold them-- the leadership that has been in control of this state for nearly 30 years. And yet, every time we come into session, the school system is failing, the road system is failing, the grid is failing, water system is failing. At some point, voters are gonna hold them accountable. And voters are now seeing what, not only what the Texas Legislature and the Republicans have done there, they have seen what Donald Trump has done. They have seen these incredibly unpopular actions again and again: firing hundreds of thousands of veterans, slashing the NIH, slashing the Weather Service, cutting Medicaid and Social Security, doing all these things. Eight hundred thousand Texans are gonna lose their healthcare. Two hundred thousand Texans are going to starve. And not only that, once again, we are dealing with a preventable tragedy. Preventable like the deaths from the winter freeze, preventable like the deaths from Hurricane Barrel. All preventable if our leadership actually took action and took care of things instead of playing political games. We have to be here. If we are not here to speak against this and to fight against it, who else is gonna do? It's not gonna be Republicans.
If you were a forum break, given that the Department of Justice is now run by Pam Bondi and the Trump administration, is there concern that they could, because the Texas legislature doesn't finish the redrawing themselves, that they could actually use their power to force a map upon Texas? We haven't really seen that happen before, but it seems like there are completely different rules right now happening in the justice department.
So Trump just telling a state to use a map, which would be completely unconstitutional and against all known election law that I know of, would not be out of character for that. Because this is where we are in our history right now, right? This is not normal shenanigans. This is not a normal power play. This is a President of the United States who does not care about what the law is, does not give a crap what's in the Constitution, and a political leadership that is unwilling to say no. This is-- what they're doing right now is wildly unpopular on their side. But because Donald Trump said it, no one wants to speak against it, and Greg Abbott is too scared to say no.
Chairman, if I may, both to your question and to yours, because you've been covering this a while. This time is very different for a variety of reasons. One, as you just pointed out, Texans aren't asking for it. I could not have more differences with Tom DeLay, but he was a Texan. And Texas members of Congress were unfortunately pushing that illegal racial gerrymander back in the day. In this case, Texas Democrats and Texas Republicans in Congress all oppose this plan. It's just that the Texas Republicans in Congress are too chicken to say it on the record. And I know they've said it off the record to everybody here. That is different. Second, since Donald Trump is ordering this for his own national purposes, this is a moment in which Trump's numbers are in the toilet. And to your question, Trump's overreach is deeply disturbing even to conservative Americans, which is why Trump's numbers are in the toilet, not just on the economy, but on immigration of all issues. Because Pam Bondi going out there saying that she's not going to do basic things that they promised, like release the Epstein files, while ordering the arrest of elected officials is deeply disturbing even to Texas conservative voters. So Trump's numbers are in the toilet, and it's all about Trump. But Republicans here in the House, Republicans in the United States House, this is not-- this does not accrue to their benefit. This is different than other redistrictings where that may have been the case. Third, as it relates to the Voting Rights Act, in the past, Republican officials, although they violated the Voting Rights Act every time, if we read it as it was written in '65, they've at least pretended to care about it. In this case, if they come for four or five, what you all call democratic seats-- there's not four or five democratic seats in Texas. They are communities of color voting for the elected officials of their choice. If they come for two, three, four, or five, the level of violation of the Voting Rights Act is something unlike you've seen in any of those prior redistrictings. And then finally, there is national attention on this that did not exist in any of those other redistrictings. You did not have governors of other states starting to say that they are going to impose a cost on Trump and Texas Republicans if they go along with their plan. And I think it's very important that we recognize this is about Texans' voting rights being suppressed. But if governors of other states allow that to go unchecked, that will spread like wildfire across the country. None of those conditions existed during prior redistrictings, which makes it that much more important for Democrats to fight this in Texas and creates a real chance of us derailing Trump's plan.
I have a question over here.
Are you planning to attend today at 12:00 PM?
Who's the question for? Who is the question for?
Oh, whoever can answer it.
This is a congressman, and we have House members here, too.
Yeah, I'm not--
Different legislative body.
Are you trying to say, are people showing up in the session today?
Yes, yes. Our House Democratic Caucus are-- I mean, there's some people who are not here because of vacation or because they're sick, but we're here. We're here today. We're here to hold Governor Abbott, Dan Patrick, and everybody else accountable for the things that they've promised. That's it.
Chairman, if you mention that every option is on the table, is a forum break inevitable?
Every option is on the table, and Democrats are gonna consistently look at the environment and see what is the smartest decision to make, and we will come to a consensus on what that decision is. That's it. It will be when we decide it is.
A question on redistricting. In the past, they-- Republicans have tried to play the different racial groups of the Democratic coalition against each other and different individuals against each other. How are you guys gonna stop?
And we're gonna make this the last question, and then I can help get folks individually connected with members and surrogates.
I have never seen not just Texas Democrats in Congress, but our entire Democratic Caucus in Congress so united. Every single member recognizes this is about something much bigger than ourselves. This isn't about protecting my seat. This isn't about protecting somebody else's seat. This is about the 15 million Americans that are about to lose their healthcare. This is about a president who is taking $1 million a chair to come lobby him in the White House, not in campaign money, but in personal cash to his wallet through crypto. This is about something so much bigger than ourselves, and so this is not about us getting pitted against one another. This is the biggest attack on the Voting Rights Act that we have seen in our lifetimes. We are all united, from the Legislature to the Congress, in fighting against it. And we're going to make sure that we organize millions of Texans to stop this.
So is redistricting the only issue that was for a forum break, or are there issues that you'd imagine could lead to that connection?
We're gonna cut it off there. I'm happy to get you some individual time.
Let me just say one thing, Josh, and that is that there's a lot of focus on the Congress people and the state reps, and we are so grateful for your willingness to be here and to fight with us. But part of this press conference is also that there are millions of Texans that are engaged in this process through their organizations and through their communities. And all of us working together are gonna fight every step of the way to make sure that we achieve some measure of justice. So thank you all very much for being here. We appreciate it.